It's five thirty, so I'm gonna go ahead and welcome everybody to the special meeting of the Etowah City Council. I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order, and if everybody agrees with my intentions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Here.
Councilmember Bussu?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson? Here. The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's special city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Almost.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Bussu?
Yes.
Resolution number 102, 2024, declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 to issue debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures committed in connection with the 2029 projects. Recommendation passing the off resolution number 102 to 2024.
All right, a moving recommendation. Second. Cole, are you gonna go ahead and cover this?
So, to initiate the process of the installation of the new financial software, we must make a down payment equal to one half of the upfront cost. This would be fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The software is to be funded by the sale of bonds to be sold in July. The down payment will be made from the general fund and reimbursed once the bond funds have been received. Since the issue of the bonds will occur more than sixty days from the expense, we are required to pass a resolution specifying and authorizing reimbursement.
So, council, I have any questions for Cole? Pretty straightforward. If there's no questions, then Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavendish?
Yes.
Councilmember Bussu?
Yes.
And then, continued discussion on local option sales tax and services, valid language.
So, Cole or Phil or both of you gonna present?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. So, I did send a memo. I hope everybody was able to read it, get it, sent it through your email. And this provides some historical and future estimates on revenue in order to provide you with additional information when they do the local option sales tax distribution in that language. The recommended change in the language from ninety percent streets and sewers to ten percent property tax relief to an eighty-twenty distribution for the same purpose is related to current and future loss of property tax revenue due to the impact of House File 718. The levies that were affected are emergency, support of a city-owned convention center, and support of a library. The last having been a levy approved by a vote of Etowah citizens. The total levy reduction is point six-seven-five per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. Based upon current valuations, this is four-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars in lost revenue. As part of the fiscal year twenty-five budget presentation, I stated the intent to reduce the consolidated general fund levy over the next three years to the required eight dollars and ten cents per thousand dollars. Figure one, property tax projections, shows that for fiscal years twenty-six through twenty-eight, projected increase in revenue for those three years is less than ten thousand dollars total. The tax valuation increase is based upon one-point-seven-five percent per year. As you remember in the presentation, the actual average was one-point-eight-seven, but I take one-point-seven-five as more conservative because of the peaks and valleys that we had in some of our valuations. Additionally, the chart indicates only moderate increases from fiscal twenty-nine on, with the increases not meeting the needs for contractual pay increases, let alone any increase in other expenses. I also provided a figure on our local option sales tax revenues from twenty-nineteen to projected twenty-twenty-five. Additional estimates for fiscal years twenty-six through thirty are added based upon a one percent annual increase in receipts, and I think that is probably very liberal. I think that the actual increase per year is going to be less than one percent, but I did it at one percent. Fiscal years twenty through twenty-five averaged a seven-point-seven-nine percent increase, but there were external factors that caused extreme increases and decreases. Fiscal year twenty-one had an increase of twenty-seven-point-zero-eight percent, most likely due to the taxing of all internet sales. That was a year where the Supreme Court ruling that sales taxes needed to be collected on all internet sales or applicable internet sales, and so you saw the increase. Fiscal year twenty-three had a decrease of twelve-point-four-three percent, most likely due to the pandemic, while fiscal year twenty-four's increase was probably due to the recovery of the economy. I have prepared three scenarios for redistribution of the loss. The first is based upon the eighty-twenty, a second on seventy-five-twenty-five, and the third on seventy-thirty. In conversation with council members after the April sixteenth meeting, they requested information on the effect of changing the distribution based upon the differing distribution percentages. What you'll see is that if, with the eighty-twenty, the amount of increase or decrease is the same, whether the increase to the property tax relief or decrease to the streets and sewers. In the first year, it would be projected to be four-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, three-hundred dollars, which would make up this year's loss. After that, there's a modest increase to four-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, then five-hundred-and-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-seven, five-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. Again, not sufficient to make up for necessary increases or contractual increases in wages and benefits. For the seventy-five-twenty-five split, you see that there would be an increase/decrease of seven-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars in year one, seven-thirty-five in year two, seven-forty-seven in year three, seven-fifty-nine in year four, and seven-seventy-one in year five. What I will tell you is that helps without having to look at, possibly look at increases in franchise fee, but again, this is also based upon a one percent increase in the sales tax, and I think that would be lower. I think what you might see is closer to a, you know, seven-twenty-four in the first year, seven-twenty-five, seven-twenty-six in the second year type of increases. On the seventy-thirty, seventy-thirty split, first year would be nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty, nine-seventy-three in the second year, nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven in the third year, one million dollars in year four, and a little over one million dollars in year five. So, some notes, an eighty-twenty distribution will replace the lost property tax revenue based on current valuations. It does not provide sufficient revenues to cover increased personnel and operational costs for the general fund. Either the seventy-twenty-five or the seventy-thirty provide for better ability to meet our expenses, our expense needs with seventy-thirty for offering the greatest relief. Changing the distribution does not necessarily mean that all of the increase to property tax relief will go to the general fund. It is possible that not all of the funds from the distribution of seventy-five-twenty-five to seventy-thirty would be needed in certain years. The excess could be distributed to streets and sewers to free up finances and to free up finances for economic development efforts. Opportunities for revenue growth are limited. A larger portion of loss going to the property tax relief now will allow us to deliberate in decisions about the delivery of city services and avoid an increase of franchise fees in the short term to maintain the current level of services. A reduced portion going to streets and sewers does not necessarily slow the projects. The loss fund has a significant balance of over six-point-two million dollars. The balance could be put towards projects to keep them on track. Additionally, there is other financing options that could be used that would allow projects to move forward. Staff looks to add a capital improvement plan process that will allow better planning based upon projected resources and expenses. A good CIP allows products to be funded at the time needed while allowing staff to more accurately estimate the availability of funding. Regardless of the revised distribution, staff will need to find efficiencies and expense reductions. This will need to occur with every budget from here on out, as staff fully expects the legislature to continue to put constraints on revenues with no relief on expenditures.
Council have any questions for Cole?
It doesn't look to me like you provided any information on fifteen-eighty-five split. Maybe I'm not seeing that.
No, no, I did not provide that because that was not a question to me from those I talked to after the meeting.
Okay, I must have missed that. Also, there's no information on remaining at ten-ninety, from what I can see.
Well, remaining at ten-ninety would mean four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the general fund, based upon current estimates. That provides no additional revenue to the general fund, which leaves us in a position of, right now, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar deficit in the general operating, and would be a larger deficit next year without major reductions.
Any other questions from council?
Look, I wanted to kind of go back to how the meeting ended last Tuesday. I understand when we're talking money, especially when there's a money problem, that emotions could rise, not any different than our households or anything else, but at the end of the meeting, one of the council persons said that I need to bring some information to the meeting, and just for starters, no one tells me what to bring to a meeting, okay? My concern, I never was against the eighty-twenty, and the courier misquoted me, regardless of what they say, and because they didn't watch the whole tape over again. My concern isn't, wasn't eighty-twenty from the beginning. My concern is, all we're doing at this point right here is putting Band-Aids on something. So, I know that the general fund has X amount of money in there. Probably ninety-five percent of that is already spoken for. It goes out, we have no control over it. I think one of the things that would really help us moving forward is when new projects come into town, that we don't give them eighty percent of taxes free for fifteen years. I understand that we need them building. I was talking with someone today, but we can't afford it when we don't have enough money coming into our general fund. We can help them all we want to, but then we're going broker and broker. I'm all for helping them, but I think we need to change that percentage down or consider changing that down. Because I explained to the person that I was talking with, I said, let's say for an example, you went through a divorce, you became a single parent, and you was investing fifteen percent of your money into where you work at, and they had a match and everything else, you was planning for retirement like we should. But now, all of a sudden, you went through a divorce, you don't have that other income coming in, so you go to your employer and say, okay, I want to take from fifteen percent, and I want to bring it down to seven, because I'm a single parent now and I'm struggling. And that person's probably going to say, but look up here ahead. Look ahead when you're sixty-five and you retire. Well, this person here, which is more or less a general fund, we need money now. That person's more concerned about going to the grocery store, not what's going to happen forty years down the road. So, I suggest that we, what little bit of money we do have control of in that general fund is work on that areas when people move into town to build stuff.
I've got a couple of questions. You know what concerns me? I have some constraints, things like how we arrived at, happened to make this decision. I mean, and I understand there was some financial things to pass, and I do want to commend you for all this hard work you're doing. Tell me if I'm wrong, we're almost, I don't want to use the word force, I hate to use that word, however, without at least an eighty-twenty, let's just put it in the name and start, we're in real trouble.
Well, what I will say is that without the eighty-twenty, given what we're projected, even on the contractual matters, we don't have the money to meet that. We will not. So, it will require deep cuts into the general fund, and as you know, the general fund is heavy on service and personnel, and it would, and again, I'm not bringing this up as a threat, because it's just a reality. That's our largest expenditure, and it's probably going to be some cuts there somewhere, because I, you know, in going through it, you can cut hours, you can cut, you can cut travel, you can cut training, you can cut all those things, but it's not going to reach the level necessary to meet our contractual obligations. The other thing is, is we have to make a decision on all those different things of how far to cut. One of the things that many cities do when their face is, well, we're gonna cut all travel and training, right? Well, then you fall behind. So, you have to be able to then prioritize, what training do we need to take, right, versus what training we'd like to take, type of thing, so that we're not falling behind on those. What equipment do we need, not what equipment do we want, so that, again, we're not falling behind driving a car that's twenty-five years old and the maintenance costs on it are more than what would be to purchase a new one, or, you know, the cost benefit of it.
Right, and I understand that it's not a threat, because I understand that, you know, from even my previous experience, that, you know, whether we like it or not, if we look at, if we stayed at ninety-ten or we looked at a smaller split, the unfortunate thing is, is you have to look at staff, that's how you reduce. So, just to be transparent to the rest of my council members, I am really not in favor. I don't want to lose staff. I understand how important training is, and to me, there is no, you shouldn't have to choose. All training is important, that's how we train our staff and retain our staff. I just am trying to play these scenarios out of my head, and to be honest, I think seventy-five-twenty-five is probably a little too high. I'm comfortable with eighty-twenty, because I don't, you know, I don't want any reductions. I do want some property tax relief, and I want to make sure we are taking care of our staff and our citizens. Now, that doesn't mean that I disagree with councilor counties, I think we still need to look at cuts, I mean, not people cuts, I still think we need to look at our equipment, we need to look at what we're using. So, I don't think, even if we supported an eighty-twenty, that we should stop looking at different ways to save. I would, you know, even when you look at equipment, and maybe I look at it different than other people, I want the safest, I want the best, you know, with the equipment that's going to work. Sometimes, when, you know, it's like, let's take a little bit, sometimes a little bit is not even the best, sometimes a little bit rarely is the best. I mean, you look at equipment, I want our people safe, I want our citizens safe. So, I guess, just to say to my other fellow council members, I do support the eighty-twenty like that, I was never against it, and I do have trouble with how we arrived here and have to make this decision. I still think there'll have to be future cuts. I feel fortunate you're here to help us with that, so with that, I would be delighted to look at the city council.
A lot of these cuts that the city's faced with, that's been created by the state of Iowa, and House File 718 the last two years, a lot of this stuff is being determined by what the state's doing, the city's and county's, that's how, but I'm saying, that's how we got where we're at.
Right, and I understand it, and I think, you know, like, I don't want to blame it all on, I don't want to say it was all poor decisions, I don't want to say it was all that, it's just the factor of many things leading up is actually what I meant, so. Go ahead, Bill.
You might be saying what I'm gonna say, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, I was gonna say, I don't think it's any secret that the last year, there were a lot of unknowns with the financial situation, and that was staff, that was council, that was the public, and we had somebody in the position of tools in now that didn't have the right skill set that we needed, so there were some unknowns. That said, I don't think that there were necessarily poor decisions made, because the staff that was assisting with the budget every year for the last few years had been looking at areas that could be reduced. We have a review for equipment. We had the snowfall, historic snowfall, and we had, I don't know how many pieces of equipment that were out of commission, because they hadn't been replaced on a more timely basis, you know, so I think there's definitely a balance there, and having the right people and people that you can trust to evaluate that stuff. You know, we're not buying a car just to buy a car, we're making sure that it needs to be purchased before it is, and that's something I think I've experienced in the last few years, and has led us to be able to reduce the tax levy, so even beyond the reduction from House File 718 that was forced onto us, we still reduce beyond that even, so.
Right, and I want to make it clear that when I say poor decisions, I didn't say anything about leads. I think these guys do a fantastic job. So, the people who run the departments and the leaders, I don't think they make poor decisions at all. In fact, in the last presentation, I think they make very good decisions, and I think they're good budgets. I just think over the last, you know, year and a half, like you said, when you don't know where you're at financially, or when you don't know what's going on, I think that causes problems, and sometimes I think it was a poor decision to let it go on that long. Now, I also understand on the flip side of that, that we have people working for us, we have to try to do that job. So, I don't want anybody, this isn't an overnight situation, I don't want anybody to think I'm pointing fingers, in fact, I think the city of Etowah, I think we have fantastic employees from leadership on down, so I don't want what I said confused.
Well, and I was just gonna say, is that, I'm sorry, I was just trying to finish my thought here, is that where I've said before, and I'll say again, whereas became a revenue problem, is not that we haven't been reducing the amount of expenditures where we could reduce that, it's because if we're going to maintain the same level of services with the library, with the event center, with the emergency fund, and the other general funds, parks, and police, fire, general admin, all of that stuff, we've got a smaller amount of revenue. That was squeezed, it was constricted, it was consolidated into that general fund to force that into that same eight dollars and ten cents. That's what I'm saying is revenue. I mean, when you're looking at the budget, revenue equals expenditure, so if our revenue is getting less, we either need to find a way to increase that revenue to offset that, or we're gonna need to decrease the expenditures at the same level, or both. Or both, right.
So, I was just gonna say a couple of things. So, first off, regarding, so not only did we have House File 718, but wasn't it a few years ago, there was like backfill that, or it's called backfill, I think, that we were getting money back, and then that was just taken away from us too?
The rollback.
Yeah, so.
Well, there's multiple factors in this. You know, there's the rollback, which hopefully will stabilize at some point, but I'm expecting that it'll probably tick down next year or something, because the housing market is still on fire, right? I can tell you that from trying to find a house, right? Things disappear quickly, and they're getting at asking price or above, and their asking prices are.
High.
High. There was the backfill, and that was to replace the ten percent rollback in the industrial and commercial valuations. That is being phased out. There, right now, there is the business and commercial tax rebate. The legislature puts an annual appropriations to that, and it's been the same for years because people haven't used it. Well, now that they made it mandatory, everybody gets it, they said it was probably good until twenty-twenty-seven, well, it's out of money. So, what the legislator told us is that once it gets to that point, we're just gonna, you know, your distribution is gonna be less, right? Hopefully, what it is, is they come to their senses and give us a little bit of a bone and say, okay, we're gonna put a little more money into it, especially since they have a surplus, but that's going to be reduced, right? So, there's all of these revenues that are being constricted at the same time as the property tax, that pays, that, again, creates a problem. If they reduced it just a little bit, so we lose the rollback, or not the rollback, but the backfill, we lose the backfill, okay? We can adjust to that, because it's being taken away in increments. It's something that can be absorbed, because it wasn't millions of dollars, it was tens of thousands of dollars, right? So, it's easy to plan for. What the legislature is doing with us with the House File 718 is they are taking away hundreds of thousands of dollars from our revenue stream.
Well, and the other comment I was gonna make too, I just think that we also need to commend our staff too, because if y'all remember, when we were sitting here, I think maybe January, one of the January meetings before Cole got here, you know, we had a bigger deficit, and our staff cut like six-hundred-thousand dollars additionally worth of things too. So, I mean, we've, our staff have done a great job to look at what is absolutely necessary to continue to run our city in a way that is acceptable to them as staff, but also to our citizens, because our citizens can expect a certain level of care, you know, living in this city, and we talk about we want our city to grow, well, we're gonna have to start making cuts too, and those are the things that usually comes around to the amenities that, you know, Bridge Res, oh, there he's back there, Bridge Resender, or the library, or, you know, other things like that, and so then, we already see it on Facebook, oh, there's nothing to do in this town, why isn't there more to do, and, you know, we have to think of that kind of stuff too, you know, we, the beach, I have some gene here, but things like that too, and so, I mean, I just, I say that our staff have done a great job of looking at their budgets, you know, we already approved our budget, and that was after our staff already went down and cut a ton of six-hundred-thousand, I think, or more.
It was, yeah, it was about that, but I mean, it was even more than that before it got canceled the first time, I think it was probably closer to a million dollars.
Well, and none of them during their presentations asked for anything that wasn't needed. I don't think anybody asked for anything that wasn't wanted. So, again, I want to reiterate, I was not talking about, you know, I think we have a fantastic staff, fantastic leadership, in fact, I brag about, you know, what they do every day, and, you know, they're helping to teach me. So, I didn't want to make this sound like it was a happen overnight thing, I'm not pointing fingers, it's just, you know, everybody needs to tighten their belt, you know, and we just need to.
Well, one of the things coming down the pipe here is that we're gonna have, have to and will do better projections and planning. I discussed with Phil about getting CIP software that's very affordable, and being able to do five-year projections on revenues and expenditures, and then be able to work in the capital projects, and the software will allow us to look at it and say, okay, this year, we're gonna run into a problem, because we're not gonna have enough money for the project, but if we split it, or we move it to a different year, move another project up, or something like that, then we can get things done and completed and still maintain a balanced budget. So, that is coming, and I think that the software that we're looking at will, you know, while it's affordable, I think it's very powerful, and I think that through that, we'll be able to give a better understanding to you, and a better understanding to the general public of what's going on, and if that happens, with you maybe having a better understanding, the public having a better understanding, then I think that there will be more of a consensus of what we need to do and how we need to get there.
See, and that's kind of what I'm talking about, I think I'm thinking about, I think if the public knew what we were doing, I think some of it comes within knowing how we're spending their money, I mean, that's what they want to know. And I think we do a pretty good job of informing them, but if we could go a little bit further out in the future, I mean, the further out we could go.
And that's exactly why the request was for, at a minimum, the eighty-twenty from Cole and myself, because we're trying to be proactive with that. The impacts of this with the House File 718, we're reacting to that. The local option sales tax is coming up, it's sunsetting, and so, with looking ahead of where that is, and how that, everything is going to impact us, and looking at options for the future, this is our proactive response to that, as well as looking at the software and being able to plan and forecast the future, you know, expenses out as well, and working and continuing to evaluate the budget, and look where it can further be reduced, but being able to do that on a timetable that's more comfortable for everybody rather than in one year or less.
Mr. O'Donnell, is this software that you're talking about something beyond the software?
The financial. The financial software? Yes. Because the financial software is really just accounting software. It doesn't have a planning component to it. The CIP software, what it does is it allows you to put in all your projections and then be able to put in the, as the projects are put in, it can tell you whether it's fully, it's gonna be fully funded or not fully funded. It allows you to move things around. It will, and you know, and the staff right now, they're, the departments look at and they say, hey, this is my equipment list and my replacement list, or these are the projects that I want to do for streets, sewers, parks, whatever, right? They look at that, but, and they even plan out years ahead. But what the component they don't have is the financing part of it. Where does the financing come? This will allow them, because this system being web-based, like our new financial software, they have a portal that they can go in and they're gonna be able to enter their projects, they're going to be able to make changes, they're gonna be able to see where they're at. This will give us reports of how far along the projects are. Not started, 25%, 50%, 75%, 100% completed. Is it in under budget, is it not under budget? All those things that they can look at and be able to make adjustments. A CIP, as I've said the whole way, is not a bible. So once it's presented to you and approved, it's there, but it's a playbook. You can take some plays out, you can put some plays in depending on where you are. My analogy is your plays when you're 20 points behind versus 20 points ahead are gonna be different. Right? So this is going to allow those changes and everything else and provide for the planning. The financial software does not provide those components.
So if I, I should clarify here, right, so the leaders would have access to that software?
Yes.
They could do their.
They could do it. It comes, what it is, it comes to either Phil or I or both of us for review and then...
But allows them to have constant input.
But allows them to have constant input.
And what's the cost on it?
So the cost is, there's two ways of doing it. The base cost is $2,500, that gives you one license. And then each additional license is $500. What we figured is, is we might need 14 total licenses. So at that amount, it's $8,500 or $9,000. They have an option for just a flat fee, annual fee of $10,000, you get unlimited number of licenses.
So $10,000 permanent number of licenses.
Right.
So even though we spend $8,500, we spend $10,000, the efficiency in the way it works and what we will save for planning would greatly, we're getting our bank problem.
Right. And then what it is, is, you know, the department heads could have full access and then their department managers could have a certain amount of access for review or be able to make suggestions or whatever, or they could be entering their own project. So what it is, is that Philip with, he could have his street superintendent proposing projects, the wastewater superintendent proposing projects, and then he can review them and then send them on for further review.
And a little bit off, Phil could take some of his guys that work, and he could share the information with them. So I have a big information sharing, I mean, he could share it with this whole group, what it's costing, what it's doing, and keep everybody in the loop, correct? It would make it way easier to do that. In other words, I'm saying you can get people's, you can get their buy-in, you can get their support, so that's okay. Thank you.
And what is the, can we have to buy this all at once or can we buy it piecemeal?
Well, we have to buy the base license, which again only allows one user. So if you want, if you want just the department heads, you're looking at $8,500, $9,000, right?
Total.
Total. But for another $1,000, $1,500, that allows us unlimited, unlimited users. So then again, we can go down to the department managers versus just the department heads and they can have access to it to be able to review or enter or make changes or anything like that.
Obviously, that makes more sense than one at a time.
Correct. And what this, what we'll do is we'll split this among the various departments. So the portion that would, the licenses needed for streets would be paid out of streets, one for sewers are paid out of sewers, the one for parks, cemetery are paid out of those funds as well. So it minimizes some of the overall cost and the burden on the general fund.
So last week, when we were talking about financial software, you mentioned like training every year for staff and like keeping updates on the software. Is that something we have to do with the CPI as well?
There is, it provides unlimited training and support. So if something new comes out, because Phil and I had both used this software when it was using Access, Microsoft Access as a base, it's now moved to a web base, right? And I can tell you that when somebody wanted something, the previous company would, oh yeah, I can make that change, but it doesn't come until next year. Because this is web based, if somebody calls up with a good idea, they can make the change instantly and goes out to everybody and they will say, hey, you know, here's this, does anybody want training on it? And you can get some training done on it.
And that would be included in the...
That's included with that.
You know, is it possible, I don't know if this is currently possible, I mean, we used to buy software, my previous department, we'd buy big software and it'd be expensive. They would allow people to go to training to be able to teach instead of having some, is that a possibility?
What they probably do is just do it virtually.
So you would, both pieces of software, we could train people to train instead of...
Certainly.
You see what I'm saying?
Well, I think with the, with the financial software, certainly once we get used to it, if we bring somebody, you know, we bring somebody new into one of the positions. So we're trying to fill the accounts receivable position right now. And so if we bring somebody new in, we can say, okay, here, this is what it is, or they can get the virtual training as well, because that's included.
Which is included, okay, that's what I wanted to say.
It's free.
That's what I wanted to see, if there's just like onsite training or training, we didn't have additional costs.
Right.
So the CIP software is not on the agenda tonight?
No, 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 no.
You're gonna bring that on at a future meeting, right?
Yes. What I'm telling you, the reason why I'm telling you this is because this all relates back to how we can do better on our budget, our operating budget.
I just want to make sure they are understanding and asking for approval tonight.
Yeah, that's coming later.
And I like to have information ahead of time, even if it is coming later, at least there's a smell of what's going on.
Right, sure.
I would like to comment on behalf of Phil Bergermeier. He asked, or I asked him for a list of equipment and materials and so on, and he gave me a complete, every department that he has any control over, complete information. And we did not come up with any decision about whether or not anything could be deleted or not, but at least we know what we've got. And he answered every question that I asked and I want to thank him personally for that. It's important that people cooperate all the way around.
So I have a quick question. So let's talk about, okay, so you said that the 80/20 distribution, this would not be sufficient to cover increased personnel and operational costs over the next few years, correct?
Correct, because all it really does is replace the revenue we're losing from the leads.
Okay. So I'm, so to be upfront and to talk about kind of what that means is, so how long until we need to come and have a conversation, well, or until staff are starting to have conversations about potential cuts? And then also, is that going to then mean at an 80/20 distribution, a conversation's coming back to us about franchise fees?
For the first part of that question, when we start talking about cuts will be probably when the budget process starts in November.
Okay.
And coming to talk to you about franchise fees might follow soon after.
Okay. So then again, being, looking to be proactive, if we look at a, whether that's at a 75, 25, or a 70, 30, that would assist how great in replace, or being, providing sufficient revenue to cover the increased personnel and operational costs over the next few years.
I think what it is, it gets us closer, but there still has to be, everything's gonna be looked at. It might be one of these where everything's held at a zero increase except for necessary wage increases. You might look at, you know, other reductions, any possible other reductions there are. Again, it might be that training is restricted to that which is necessary. Or if you have a virtual option versus a, you know, having to go there option type of thing. You know, there's other things that can be done, but I think they're marginal. One of the things that I've seen done in the past is, and everybody laughs at it, scoffs at it, but it's been done. I don't know how much money it saved them, but turn off every other street light. You know? I think Des Moines did that one year. Right? The, you know, there's not a lot of other options to us.
So I guess what I'm hearing is that whether we're at an 80, 20, 90, 10, 80, 20, 75, 25, 70, 30, the staff are going to continue to look at how we can kind of set back our costs. See, that's not something that no matter where we go, that's being taken off the table, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, our goal has been to continue to reduce the tax levy every year. Being one of the top, well, maybe 10 now in the state, isn't a goal that anybody should be proud of. Now, the reality is, services cost money. You know, there's a cost to providing services. So what services are we satisfied with and willing to pay for and which ones maybe we aren't as necessarily wanting to pay for? But the goal has been, and I think, you know, the progress has been to do that over the last few years, and to not just fall off a cliff with it, but to be able to proactively and methodically reduce that without having to cut positions or severely cut services.
And then I would just say also, and some of the things, like the other development deals and the items like that, that we've been working on as a city, is also a proactive step to help get us, I mean, it puts money into our general, or into our accounts, not it increases, whether it's a zero to 2,500 or what, it's putting money in. But in the long term, we are looking proactive at what that could do to our community too. Correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. And that was, I guess I'll say, maybe one of the unfortunate things, the other side of House File 718 is it kind of handicapped communities that were growing at a better rate. So we had a 3% haircut because we grew by more than 3%. And so that was some of that, that's why we went from 877.5 to 859 this last year. That was the most we could go because of that percentage revenue that came off the top. And so we do get, we definitely need to grow, we need to continue to grow. And I think we saw that in the presentation last week is by having the lower assessed valuation, that affects our ability, you know, the revenue we have. And communities that we're compared to population-wise that have a much lower tax rate, well, that translates almost directly to their assessed valuation. Mason City, I think, was double the valuation.
Double yours.
And their rate was, was much lower.
Right. And the thing is, is that when business and industry are looking to locate, property taxes or taxes in general are like number five on the list. What's at the top of the list right now is quality of life, because they want to be able to attract the workers. And workers want the recreational opportunities, they want the restaurants, they want the shopping. And unfortunately, the Iowa legislature thinks that, that we can do that with less revenue. But we still have the same acreage of parks, we still have a civic center we have to support to bring in those shows and attractions. So just in my honest opinion, I think the legislature sometimes cuts off their nose to spite their face.
So then as a, as our, you know, our financial director, our finance director, what is your recommendation to like, maybe I'm being a little smart with it?
Okay, so my recommendation is at least the 80/20. I think that, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the staff, but I think Phil and I have discussed that 70/30 would be much easier to work with.
That gives the greatest relief to the general fund. And the thing that I liked what you said is that doesn't necessarily delay any sewer or road work. And if the funds aren't totally needed in the general fund, they can be transferred back to the roads and sewer.
Correct.
So you still have that flexibility.
Well, and that's what I think is, it gives the flexibility because if it's at, we'll say 70/30, at 30%, those dollars in the general fund, the city council would be able to say, we're gonna use that to pay for or go towards project X, you know, street projects, sewer projects, whatever else. But we can't do the reverse and say that it's at 90/10, we can't take any of that 90% street and sewers and put it into general fund operations. Capital can't go that way, but it can go the other way.
Right. That's why I think so, for the council to keep in mind on the percentage breakdown.
I was gonna say, I think Phil should have a voice as well. He's the one that's gonna take the cut.
I mean, he knows where the money's coming from, though. I just built the stuff, so.
And you did a good job.
The only thing I'll say is we're, the long-term control plan will probably be renegotiated next year. So, I mean, whatever we do now, that might change something, but there's, that's the only thing coming up that could be a mandate us to spend sewer funds that we don't anticipate to spend now, but we shouldn't change what you decide now because of that, because we don't know what it's gonna be. So.
So you're comfortable with anything?
Yeah, like I said, I mean, there's, there's money for projects, like you said with the capital, you gotta decide what to spend where and when to spend it. And that's what's gonna change and we'll work with what they can get us.
Okay.
I'd say there's more options for the capital projects in funding sources than for the general fund. Whether you're talking about the local option sales tax, whatever percentage that is, road use tax for the street projects, bonding for projects that make sense to bond for other grants and funding, general fund support if that is necessary and available. There's different sources of reuse to back, but can't go the other way.
Right, right.
I think it's important to back up just a little here and talk about tax increment financing in Tamaulipas. That doesn't reduce the taxes that's already on that property, but it does give that person or business an opportunity to build something on that property and increase the tax base, even if it's only increased incrementally up to 10 years or even 15 years maybe. But every year that counts is another year that comes into our coffers. So I don't think we should deny the opportunity to think about tax increment financing.
Well, I think, I agree with you, but I think what it is, is that our policies need to be looked at to ensure that while we're giving an incentive, we're not hurting ourselves at the same time.
I'm good for that.
And I think the ultimate thing that Doug was trying to imply is you need to really look at how much incentive you're gonna get.
Exactly.
I think that's the point he was trying to make.
And look, I think most of your contractors or people that bring in, they know that. You know what I mean? So it's like, okay, now you, it's easier to talk about now because there's not as much fear as losing the contract as, okay, we all know what's going on here, let's try to find a number that we're both, so we'll be happy if we get the project done. I probably didn't explain it very well, but that's what I was trying to get across.
Now, as a, just a, and I know it's gonna probably prolong immediately, some of this idea out there, is that with TIF, right, if we change the amount that we're giving in rebates or incentive, we could take that percentage that we would receive and we can put it towards projects within the urban renewal area. So if we have a sewer project or a street project within the urban renewal area, we can take that extra money and put it towards it. The other thing is, if we have a, you know, if there's a park, right, and it's within the area, we can spend it on a park project that then improves the quality of life, which helps to attract the jobs for the industries. Good, didn't I?
You did good, Cole. You did good, buddy.
You did good, Cole. You did good, buddy.
Is there any more discussion before I ask if anybody wants to make a motion to take resolution number eighty-one twenty-two-four off of the table, so you guys can vote on it?
Is that something we can legally do tonight at a work session is to vote on active business?
With a special meeting?
That's why this is a special council meeting. This is a special council meeting, not a work session.
I haven't discussed this with Phil, but I think that because of the potential change, leave it on the table, but give us any directions to make any, any expectations and changes. So if you're wanting to change it from eighty-twenty to seventy-thirty or whatever, right, that, uh, you know, we can set forth the procedures to do that because, you know, it's a, you, you have to take it off the table, then you'd have to make a motion to approve, then you have to make a motion to amend it. One of the things that has to be amended in there already is the date of the election. I went with the first Tuesday in September and forgot that it's always the first Tuesday after the first Monday. So the actual, um, uh, date that has to be amended in is September tenth.
So you're asking us either table, then just a...
You don't want us to just make the amendments tonight?
I thought that's why we had this as a work session.
Oh, you're, you're right. All, all I'm saying is, yeah.
You can vote on it.
Yeah, you can vote, you can vote on it.
September tenth.
It's just, it's just that because, it, it's because we said to the, to the public that this was a work session rather than a special meeting. If you...
I see what you're saying.
See, that's what I'm saying, is that, is that if we do it at the regular meeting, that, um, there's a greater opportunity for anybody that wants to come in.
But it wasn't posted as a work session, it was posted as a special city council meeting.
I understand, I understand. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there because...
But you, you mentioned the date because that gives us a little more time to work with it, right?
Yeah, well, it gives us seven extra days. So, but...
And if you're thinking extensive changes, wouldn't it make more sense to remove it from the table and vote it down and propose a brand-new resolution?
Yeah.
Because another one to postpone removing it.
What's best for you for that?
Well, I guess, I guess, if, let me put it this way, if the only change that you're looking at is the change in the date, take it off the table, make the amendment, vote on it tonight. If you're looking at a change in the distribution, I would suggest that you take it off the table, vote it down, and prepare a new resolution for May seventh.
I would like to see a change in the distribution to seventy-thirty, if that's seventy-five, twenty-five, one of those two, to see if we can kind of alleviate some of the concerns that we've addressed tonight.
Well, I was not locked into moving up to eighty-twenty at all until I got here. Now I'm trying to be cooperative and understand the process. So I would do the eighty-twenty personally, when it comes off the table, if that's what we want to do with it.
But eighty-twenty Keith is not going to give you sufficient revenue.
Well, I understand it's just a band-aid, but that's all it was anyway. So it's just a band-aid.
But you can do better by going with one of the other percentages.
There's some flexibility with them.
Yeah. You can go one way, but you can't go the other way.
I think if we could agree to come back to the table and talk about some of the policies with our developments and look at ways to reallocate some of that money with those, then like a seventy-thirty or seventy-five, twenty-five split is more reasonable. Just because it covers some of that general fund a little bit more without taking away from some of the advantages in the community. But we'd have to agree to be able to come back and fix those policies in order to be forward-thinking, thinking ahead.
I don't know, do you guys want to voice an opinion?
I would, with everyone's feedback and, and my opinion throughout this, I, I'm leaning toward the seventy-thirty myself.
Now, Bill, how about you?
Wait a minute, since the courier's here.
The courier's not here.
Oh, they're not, okay. I have, I'm, uh, if we vote on it tonight, I would do seventy-thirty. But if we table to vote at the next meeting and something occurs that could have added information or take information away, I could possibly change my mind in time to vote. Very much.
This, this really is a tough decision to just give you the two seconds where I have to weigh it. I mean, I too supported the eighty-twenty, however, I, I don't want to have to cut staff. I don't want to have to cut the same equipment that we need. I don't want to have to quit. I don't want to have to cut training. Because I know how important that is even to retain staff and to make people feel valued. I definitely don't want to cut staff, although I'm not saying that sometimes hard decisions aren't meant to be made. And I definitely want to help the citizens of a town hall. So I probably do lean towards the seventy-thirty. And, and like, like Doug said, I don't want to be like this, you know, there's a lot of discussion here tonight and there was a lot of things that, that was new and, and explained. I mean, don't get me wrong, I still, the eighty-twenty, I, you know, was still a good option and, and I...
The eighty-twenty is not going to do what you need to do.
Right, I just value our citizens and our staff, and I know every councilman up here does. And I know every councilperson up here made the decision based on caring for the city or they wouldn't be sitting there. I, so I just, I, I lean towards that right now.
I think given some of the statements that we should vote on tonight, do you agree with Phil?
The council is, yeah, it's their decision. So we'll need to take it off the table.
Take it off, take it off the table, make a motion to approve, then make a motion to amend. And the two amendments would be changing the, the date and the distribution.
Well, I would move to take item number, uh, resolution number eighty-one twenty-two-four off the table.
Order, order, your honor. I think it has to be one of the three people that put it on the table that can remove it from the table.
It does, okay.
Okay, I make a motion to untable the item, what's that section, eighty-one twenty-two-four?
Anybody can second.
I'll second, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is the wording correct?
We're taking it to the...
We're taking it off the table.
We're voting to remove it.
Okay, so that's what we're voting on now. Okay, so Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu? Okay, so now we want to...
Need a motion to approve.
With the amendment, right?
No, no, you need, no, you need a motion to approve. And then once, uh, uh, once that is made and seconded, then you can make a motion to amend.
I have a motion to approve eighty-one twenty-four.
Okay. Now your motion to amend, and the amendment would be amendment to section two, changing the, um, special election date to September tenth. And amending exhibit A to, as proposed uses of the tax, thirty percent for property tax release, relief, seventy percent for streets and/or sewer improvements.
I make that motion.
Does that, does that not leave the council an opportunity to set up eighty-twenty or something like that? Is that what you're telling me?
That would be what would be put forth, well, first of all, we need a second on the motion.
Okay, a second, whatever.
Okay, yeah. What it does, that is the ballot language that will be presented to the public. What it means is, is that if there are sufficient funds in the general fund that aren't being used, those can be allocated by the council to streets and sewers. It doesn't, at, if, if you want to change it back to eighty-twenty, you'd have to have another special election.
Okay, well, so far we're not at eighty-twenty.
Right, I understand.
Not anyplace.
Well, or if you want to change it back to where, where it was, you'd have to have another special election, if it's approved by the voters.
All right.
The other thing too is that thirty percent or whatever portion, if you had a fund balance in there, that would, it could be used for street and sewers, it could be used for future police cars or other capital purchases or other things that you don't have to borrow for then. The general, you'd be able to use that for those purposes if desired. And that would be a, you know, decision of council.
Keith?
Phil, we can...
Keith, I know what it would look like changed on both, so I changed the dates and on the back, that's what we... Taking that sheet of writing, and then on the back is the...
This doesn't hamper our, we were still going to make progress on our street, the street repair committees.
We'll still make progress, yeah, it'll be less money every year unless we transfer back from general fund or...
Right, that's where he said, that's where he said, we could go back and say, oh, we need to get this...
So there was, yeah. Less tax or something or something.
Yeah, if there was any, so you're confident we could find other money, other places, and we could...
Well, I don't even mind. I'm confident, I'm confident that, that we'll be able to find the financing in order to keep them on track as possible, okay? I can't say, I can't say there won't be delays, I can't say there won't be delays. But what I'll tell you is we'll work diligently to keep the, the schedule that, that has been set.
Right, you said it might, it might impact the prioritization of some street projects. If you got some that are at its expense, you could might move those up.
Correct.
But we're going to keep moving on our streets and we're going to keep looking at...
Like you said.
That is a, that is a priority of the council and, um, uh, staff will continue to allocate its resources in order to, to meet that goal.
Correct, okay.
Do you have it all down?
Yeah.
So we're ready to vote on the amendment?
On the amendment, yes.
Right, we're voting on date and percentage.
And seventy-third.
Right, and the date for the public, carrying September tenth.
September tenth on the election.
On the primary election.
Yeah, maybe at the election.
I knew it should be.
Okay, Chris will take the role then.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
No.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Motion carries four-one.
And that was just the amended for...
That was the amendment. Now what it is, is this is, is you now vote on the amended, uh, resolution.
Is there a motion to approve the amended resolution?
No, you already, you already have that, you already have, yeah, now you just need to take a vote.
You guys ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
No.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Motion carries four-one.
Is there any other business that needs to be brought up for the council tonight?
I wish the courier was here, they could get it right maybe once.
If not, then I entertain a motion to adjourn the special city council meeting.
Some of them.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.